That is exactly what he does and he never gets up. So there have been times because we're not necessarily and he doesn't let that discourage him, he keeps going. He will stop, he'll pause and kind of ask questions and then keep going. Right on, that is super awesome to be able to do. So Kim, I am so proud of you for pushing through and showing that he can do it with a smile. And you have the spirit that says, I can do this. And that is amazing. I'm so proud of you and I'd love you to back in my classes.
Good evening. I get the privilege of introducing two amazing ladies. First, I have Mrs. Benton who's a sixth grade math teacher from our grade team. And our lady of the hour is Mrs. Abigail Callahan. And she was, she has been nominated for flexibility as well. And so we'll let Spence tell a little bit about it to each other.
As Dr. Ruckles said, I am just a tip. And I was so excited to have Abby on our team this year. I got to have her in summer school for a few days off and off, which I loved. And then I'm so excited to see her here with my roster. And Abby has grown so much this year. She's gone through things that have been very hard for her to do. And she has sometimes needed to take a breath and stop. But then she's moved forward and she's worked hard. She's often raising her hands and she's extremely intelligent. Yeah, she comes to my board a lot to help the others understand what's happening. My buddy, her work on the board for others. And I've just seen her grow a ton in her excitement in the classroom and her resilience to push through things when sometimes our grades don't catch up to what we want to say. And she will say, she'll say, I need to stop and she'll take a breath and then she's rolling right along. And so I'm very proud of that.
All right. Nice, nice. And she sort of naturefully, hopefully we're remembered and affiliated with her. The chapter of history, yeah, with her. She said, "Jonathan stands out as a student who bodies sprinting severely. He approaches each day with kindness and sympathy, always willing to lend a hand or offer encouragement to classmates in difficult ways and challenges. You know, it's up, he's possible to improve his determination and positive attitude. And then especially where your passion for her. Then Jonathan is a shining example of resilience and positivity and becomes great. She's incredibly smart, always eager to learn and certainly brings thoughtful and vital to class discussion. He is also kind and helpful, often going out of her way to support her classmates. Her positive attitude and strong work ethic give her an absolute pleasure."
I'm gonna try to speak extra loud for Grandma Sue in the back. Can you hear me? Okay. Finley River is proud to present Sophia Peebles as our Resiliency Student of the Month. Resiliency is a critical characteristic for Finley students. In fact, it is so important for our students. We have a class called Resiliency. Sophia never needed that class. The second time I met Sophia, I was trying to get to know them so I could learn their needs and figure out how we could best serve them. And after a couple probing questions, Sophia stopped me and said, "Mr. Perry, I am safe, I am loved, I am fed." And then gave me a look like, "I'm good." If you knew more about the backstory, there are tons of reasons. You know, I've got a teenage son, I can't get him to say that. But the attitude that has either been born in or impressed upon Sophia to persevere through the individual challenges that they have met in their life and to carry the attitude of, "I'm good," is amazing. And that's why Sophia is somebody we're super proud to have be our Resiliency Student of the Month.
Good evening, guys. I'm super excited to recognize two students tonight for OHS. When we sent out our nominations for resilient and flexible, we got back more nominations than I ever get for one of these. And two names rose to the top very quickly. One of them couldn't beat her night because he's playing baseball for us down in the O show. I've heard they've won a game already and hopefully a second one's in the works. But I've got with me tonight, right here, Noah Gillian. In January, Noah learned that he had cancer. Since then, Noah's been having to travel to Mayo Clinic, MU Hospital, for doctor's appointments and treatments. Despite his diagnosis, Noah has never stopped working on his classes and his schoolwork. Noah is still enrolled in OTC and College Now courses and OHS online classes. Cool fact that I learned is that Noah still has all A's despite all of this work as well. So he's extremely resilient. The fact that he is here with us today and will soon be walking across or rolling across the stage or walking, we don't know yet, right? As soon as he's gonna be there at graduation with us as an OHS graduate is very special to everybody at the high school. We'd also like to recognize Noah's brother Zach. Zach was nominated by several teachers. And like I said, he's playing baseball today. But he's also gone through a pretty tough time dealing with his brother's diagnosis. He's still shown up to school, to practices with a smile on his face, the wonderful attitude, while also dealing with an injury of his own. He's such a strong kid and tries so hard. Even it would be completely understandable to need more time, to fall back. OHS is proud to recognize him as well. He and his brother are the true embodiment of the word resilience. Ladies and gentlemen, OHS Portrait of a Grad Students, Noah and Zach Gillian.
I have a question. My first couple of meetings, um, where you guys were doing, that's how I thought maybe you were just pranking me.
No.
No.
I found myself.
All right. Next on the agenda is to accept the certified results of the election. I'll entertain a motion to accept the results of the election.
I'll make a motion to accept the results of the election.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? At this time, I would appoint a pro temp chairman, Dr. Wilson, as a pro temp chairman.
We would like to swear in the new board members.
Just a little. Both, yeah.
Both of us.
Yeah.
Yeah. I didn't think about that. Come on, Sarah. You probably swear on a word. But if you support the constitution, may it not affect and the constitution that stands there. And then you will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of school director and employing the strict number of citizens, families, Christian, they concerning to the best of your ability, according to the law, so help me God.
We want to thank you for your service, for your leadership and the school and the community that you've served for the last three years. Thank you so much.
The next, the next item is to elect board president. And so we would take nominations for the board president.
I'll make a motion to elect Amber Bryant as president.
I'll second.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, I'll take a motion to elect a vice president.
I'll make a motion to nominate James Griffin. I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Now we need an appointment of a board secretary. It has been common practice to appoint a district staff member as secretary of the board due to the responsibilities and duties of the position. It is the recommendation to appoint Barbara.
Barbara.
Barbara B. As the board secretary for the 2025-26 school year. I'll accept a motion for that.
Oh, I know, babe, Barb. Sure.
And we have a motion, a second?
Second.
All right. We have to vote. All in favor? All right. You're stuck with us. Okay, now we need, nominations are open for the board MSBA delegate.
I'll make a motion to appoint Matt Grokog as MSBA delegate.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right. We're gonna close, all in favor for Matt? It passes, congratulations.
You will.
So now we have to have a motion to elect an MSBA alternate delegate.
Make a motion to nominate Dustin Kirkman?
Excellent choice. Can I second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for Dustin Kirkman to be the alternate delegate. All in favor? That passes unanimously.
Madam President, I have a question. Did we skip treasurer on purpose?
We did. Because of the resignation, we need to wait to do that till next time.
That's fine.
So Robert will remain. I'm sorry. For now, Robert will remain.
Thanks for the rest of this year. And then we will go in May and we will elect the new or make a motion to elect the new board treasurer. We did check with MSBA because I thought that you needed to do it all at once to set the board. And she said, as long as we have it done by July 1st, that we will be fine.
As long as it's done by July 1st, is that what you said? Perfect. All right, so that closes that portion.
Unless we can talk Robert into staying.
Yeah, I'm open for that. Shall we have that dialogue?
Can we make a motion for that?
I'm moving.
Make a motion there. Allow him to get it.
All right, the next item on our agenda is the request for public comment. We do have one person who has signed up. That is Michael Bloom. And I see that you have signed up here to discuss soccer coaches. I just don't name names because that is personnel protected under sunshine law. You can talk in general.
Yeah, okay, that's fine. That's all. That's, I don't think they know who I'm asking for you, so. I was hoping other people would show up, so I'm just gonna go read this whole thing. And I was hopefully gonna cut some of it out. Members of the Ozark School Board, thank you for allowing me to address you today. I'm here to advocate for the Ozark High School Soccer Program to request the approval of two additional paid soccer coaches. Specifically, we need a third coach, long overdue, to address our current understaffing. And a fourth to proactively plan for the program's future success. This investment is essential to ensure that our soccer student athletes receive the support they deserve to excel. Our soccer program is a standout in Ozark's athletic lineup, consistently ranking among the top teams in the Central Ozark Conference. However, we are critically understaffed with only two paid coaches managing both the boys' and girls' soccer teams. That's over 50 players in each group. And this allows them to play at both varsity and junior varsity levels. Compare this to other sports at the Ozark, in the Ozark school system. The football team has 11 paid coaches. Volleyball has three paid coaches. Boys and girls basketball have four paid coaches each. Wrestling, four paid coaches. Baseball, four paid coaches. Softball, three paid coaches. Cheer, three paid coaches. Soccer, despite its success, is stuck with just two coaches. In the COC, every other school has at least three paid soccer coaches. And NIXA has recently added a fourth. This gap underscores a third coach is not just necessary, it's overdue. A fourth would position us to keep pace with our peers and plan for sustained growth. The soccer program is one on the cusp of a significant expansion. So with the kids, including my son and a lot of his friends and people that we know, we're looking at 20 to 25 incoming freshmen annually for at least the next three years. And the coaches on staff would be able to give you guys greater details for younger students. I'm just not aware of everybody else that's following on behind. Also, there's gonna be a huge boon with popularity with soccer because America gets the World Cup in 2026. So hopefully, there'll be even more for us to celebrate. With only two coaches, we're forced to cut talented players due to limited capacity, denying them access to the sport that offers lifelong benefits. Adding two coaches would address this strain and unlock the program's full potential. This would allow us to form a freshman team. There would be smaller practice groups, so there'd be greater development by the coaches for the students on those teams. It would be also a safer environment for all of them because they'd be able to supervise a larger number of players. And then hopefully, what I would like to really see also is an expanded community program. Initiatives for like summer camps, which I know that we already have on a small scale in conjunction with one local club. But I'd like to see that encompass all of the local clubs so that we're growing students from. Each club has its own unique flavor that it offers for the community to join. And those clubs, if we engage as a community, we can bring everybody's personalities to the table instead of just one flavor that comes to the table from the most prominent two clubs. These changes would cultivate teamwork, discipline, leadership in our students and benefit extending, hopefully the benefits would extend to their academic performance. I think I swept them off. I hope you guys get the point. I'm really stoked about the future of soccer and I just really hope that you guys support our current staff and help them expand so they can take better care of our kids. So thank you, that's all I got.
Thank you. Thanks.
Do appreciate that information. Next is our athletic presentation. Nancy Little is going to get to us.
Good evening, thanks for having me. I'll give a quick recap of our winter athletics successes that they achieved this winter. Start boys' basketball, finished fifth in the new revamped COC with the addition of Kickapoo and Glendale amongst others. Looked at junior high, finished 60 and 2, which is obviously outstanding. Both of those groups were seventh and eighth grade CLC champs. Girls' basketball finished a 500 record, fourth in the COC. Their junior high went 41 to 16, seventh grade with CLC champs. And both those groups went undefeated as well. Boys wrestling, CLC champs, district runner-up, had 10 state qualifiers. The junior high program, CLC champs by, I mean, they ran away with it to have a really good group of junior high wrestlers coming up. Girls wrestling, which is growing here at Ozark, they finished third in the COC. They had five state qualifiers, that's the most we've had in our history here for the girls' program. Cheerleading, another successful year, state champs in the stunt. End game day, had 12 all-state recipients. Also finished highly with their club cheerleading group at Nationals. And then dance, hired a new coach, she did a wonderful job as well. They finished fifth in the place in hip-hop and had six academic all-state athletes. As you can see, we had a successful winter, but also we've got a good group coming up. Youth is strong and look forward to them getting to high school soon. So I got, thank you.
I have a question. Are there any currently plans considering expanding the number of coaches in the soccer program? Are those plans in the work discussions?
Request for this year to happen and I can't answer that question totally, but I have confidence it'll happen.
We evaluate all the positions and we also put, we have a document with all requests from throughout the district that either whether it be a teacher or a coach or a custodian. And as we're looking at our budget, we talk about each of those, of what we can do and what we can't do. So I will say that it is on the list and we're having the conversations about it.
It is on the list, that's what I wondered.
And do what? Yes, we will bring something here to the board on that one, yes.
Mr. Little, Mr. Little has brought up a soccer coach. We supported them for three or four years. It's been on our list. It's just when you've got all the needs on the list, you have to decide what's the most important need in front of you.
I just wondered if it had made the list.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, it's been on the list for three years.
It's on the list.
Okay.
So would this be something we talk about next month or when would, when would we?
Usually what has happened is that we would bring it to you when we're bringing the budget.
Okay.
Okay.
Bring a work session?
In a work session. But we also understand that sometimes the timing, if we have a really good idea where the budget is going before then, then we would bring you some of those personnel items prior to that because I also understand that we have to get them advertised to try to find them.
And understanding we still have to decide that. What, what's the, is there a timeline that we need as far as getting coaches for? Because that, I think that's a fall sport.
It is, yeah, for the, for the boys, it's fall and for the girls, it's spring.
When would we, when would we have to decide that to be able to implement? I think you said a freshman team.
Oh, I mean, if we could get that approved in some capacity by next month, I think that'd be great timing for us. We currently do have some people in the, in the program or in the system that volunteer, which a lot of our programs have volunteer coaches. But I think we've got people here in place that we might be able to fill a spot like that, not to go outside and advertise. But anyway, I think we've got good people here and hopefully it will happen. Like I said, I put it on the last three years, again, it's just, it comes down to money. Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Dr. Wilson, do we have a date on that work session yet? I'm sending that out. I've already got it scheduled to send out to you, to the board members at 8 o'clock in the morning with various dates that you can choose from.
Choose, okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
I wanted to wait till we had the new board.
Yeah, yeah. Good plan. Okay, next, under informational items is, Dr. Carson is going to present on the culture and climate survey. Oh, the staff portion?
Sure, the staff portion of the Culture and Climate Committee survey. If you click on that. I'll stand here where I can see it at the same time you do. So we did not have enough staff. The first time we took it, it was not good timing. So we re-sent it for staff and we ended up with about the same responses we've had last year.
Okay.
So we, it was an increase of 300 and something responses. And that was in my learning division narrative, I believe. But if you'll scroll down and just look at the survey, you've got engagement, culture, relationships, support and safety and security. And those are the themes that we've been tracking for the last few years. And it goes from 1 to 5, 5 being strongly agreed. And I believe next year, we're gonna reset that as a 1 through 4 because several board members prefer. But we, that way you're either on one side or the other. And so we can reset that next year. But we wanted to have three years of the same data before we did that. So if you will keep clicking below, you saw a lot of this last year. So specific, or last month. So for the staff, this is the new data that we have added. And you will notice that things did not have any major swings either up or down. They are in about the same ballpark. What you do see where we had the most swing was in professional development and support. And so around that, we poked that several ways with, in different committees as we're sitting on our strategic team now. And so there was a .3 drop. So we were just asking questions about why, what can be done differently. The larger drop was in the non-certified area. Certified teachers didn't show as big a drop. And so it just, it points out to us as we're talking to people and trying to understand the lower, the, the more granular data is that we, this year, we did not host the PD Academy, which we have done in years past. So when, PD Academy is when teachers get to have a full day of PD and it's all based on their own choice. So they choose throughout the day what fits their, what they're needing to learn next. And we did not host that. We are going to do that. It's already scheduled into our schedule for next year. And that'll be at the beginning of next year. So that was what I've heard back from most for that. But with the non-certified, it did show, they were just looking for some job-specific PD, job-specific professional development that we just need to make sure that we're offering more of that and making sure we're hearing their voice in that process. Otherwise, the data didn't show much movement either up or down. And when we, so the first set of data was 180 some people. When we got up to 500 and something, really didn't move. So it wasn't that the data had a huge switch when we had more people take it. It was, both sides was relatively the same. So the major theme is that we continue doing what we're doing. And I think this, this spring, with all the different people who are serving on strategic planning committees, there are a lot of voices at the table and we're welcoming those voices. Dr. Van Lear has been in every building. She's been with multiple sets of students. It was great to read her email about the middle school students. She said, in all her years of doing this, she's never had a group of middle school kids who are more prepared to talk about serious issues. I mean, they were there. So she said, on the, yeah, so nice job. Middle school students were on it. And she said it was just a beautiful moment for her. So we are giving lots of input, so. So, we are giving lots of input. So, this may, we're not one hundred percent sold. We'll use this particular climate and culture survey for next year. There are some pieces we need to keep to it. But we're not sure that we will use this exact same one because they're waiting for that strategic planning piece to finish. And then, once we have it complete, then we'll move to what's next in regard to surveys. What, I know you looked at the other pieces last month. What questions in particular do you have?
I guess I would say, I know you're asking the question in the strategic planning, but is there a way to go back and ask them specific questions to say, hey, what? For the PD, it's a ten percent drop. So, I mean, tell us what you would do better. Why did this, why did this drop in your mind? And what can we do better next year?
Dr. Wilson and I talked through that. I think it's a great idea, specific, that specific question, that targeting question like you've mentioned. I think it's a great idea. Other questions or thoughts?
I have a question. You mentioned that you might move it from a five-point scale to a four-point rating scale?
Correct.
Just my math mind thinks that's less accurate, right? Now, you only have a twenty-five percent range for each number that a person could select rather than a twenty percent range. I mean, I'm the person who wants to put four point four, you know, I would rather have a hundred, but I know that's not practical.
So, we could go with fifteens and do six. I think what, I think what people in the board wanted was it's either skewed one direction or it's skewed the other. Right? You see what I'm saying? So, you've got a fifty percent mark there that you're either this way or that.
I think it would give more information, more helpful information if it was a narrower category. Would we go with six? I don't love it when there's a middle because that's not a real. So, could we use six then? Would that work instead of only four? I would just four.
I was just going to use emojis, but she's talking.
I think, I think that it, when you have four, it forces, you can see a positive warning. It's going to force them to go to one side or.
So, TBD, I think it'd be a great work session conversation. But yes, we'll, we will revamp this as we get our strategic plan. We start aligning all those goals. So, the one thing we definitely want is that all our feet are pointing in the same direction. So, that's what we'll be working on. Any other questions? Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Next, under reports, we have the superintendent update first.
I just wanted to quickly let you know, I believe there's only a little over two weeks left in our legislative session. And so, things are starting to move or not move. And so, just waiting to see what happens. I, I did see an article and I had some superintendents reach out that Lincoln Huff in the Senate has requested that the majority of the money that was being withheld or not appropriated from the House of Representatives for them to put that back in for education. So, that may, may help us a little bit. So, just stay tuned on that because we don't know where that's at. We also don't know where open enrollment is at this point or any of those. We're just waiting to see how it comes out of the Senate and then if it has to go back to the House.
And that budget number comes out in May? Is that right?
Do what?
That budget number comes out in May?
Yes.
It has to be done by the middle of May. So, it's usually the week before. I heard that it passed, just last week or maybe two weeks ago, passed out the House with the education fully funded.
No, I don't think it was. No, the.
I asked specifically, is it include the SAT? I was talking to the budget chair.
So, I think it depends on how you define fully funded. Right. I think that it's the, it's the play of game. Yeah.
Right. I asked about the SAT. That's the thing that, that it was not going to be funded.
Did they say at what point was it? Was it at seventy, about seventy-two hundred or did they consider sixty-seven hundred?
I didn't ask any numbers. Those are good things to know.
Because it, Lincoln Huff is putting back in three hundred million dollars or something like that. It was not.
That wasn't in there.
That was not in there.
Thanks.
Which follows last year's law that they passed. They gave a lot of promise and so, they lowered the SAT. So, if they are the lower SAT, it doesn't fund the law. And so, what Lincoln has done is brought it back to the other SAT, which would fully fund it. So.
Oh, great. So, that is a.
Right.
Yeah, okay. All right. Next is district reports. If everybody had a chance to look through those, do we have any questions or comments on those? I didn't, but I enjoy getting them. Good job. Yeah, I just want to say, I know it takes a lot of work to put all that stuff together, but I really love getting to read all the nuts and bolts about what's happening. Those are great. Thank you, guys, for doing that. And Dr. Carson, you have to put all the buildings in there. Thank you for doing that. And it was early, too. All right. Oh, oh, sorry. One more thing. And I also noticed on the enrollment, it had at the bottom each month. Thank you for doing that. And it was so great to see what the trend was, how it compared to the previous months. Thank you. Next, we have future dates. Next week, we have a junior high board walkthrough, which I have to give a shout out to the junior high. They, their group made us dinner tonight, which was delicious. The, was it FCCLA? I should know that because my child was there. But yeah, it was delicious. It was. We thank them for that. And then, exciting, on that same day, we have the tennis court ribbon cutting at three o'clock. And then, everybody's super excited for prom. Does that mean we're supposed to be going to this?
Yes.
If you would like to, yes.
I have a child who would not like that. And then, our board meeting. And then, you can keep looking down the list. We kind of have a couple busy months coming. All right. Next is the approval of the consent agenda. Hope everybody has had a chance to go through that. I would entertain a motion, motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Do we need to have any discussion or are we ready to vote? We don't? Okay. Well, then, let's vote. In favor, say aye.
I'm going to abstain since I wasn't here for the last one.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And then, we have one abstaining. That passes. All right. Next, we have new business. First up is the MSBA policy first read for a couple of those. Thank you, Dr. Link.
So, before you have your short-term leave policies for both our professional and our support staff, we're bringing these to you. Some conversations, I think, there's two real reasons we want to make a philosophical change with our short-term leave policies. One of the primary drivers from this happened through some of the superintendent's advisory meetings that Dr. Wilson's been having, where she gets people from all different departments coming in, sitting down, talking, and she takes that feedback. And she brings it to the directors and the principals in our month, our monthly meetings and shares that with us. And some of the feedback that we're getting is that our staff would like to see us have a philosophical change when it comes to how we, how we look at short-term leaves. Kind of the second thing we want to look at, too, is, you know, we talk about attracting and retaining talent. You want to offer, you know, salaries are part of that, but you have to look at the total compensation package. And part of that is the benefit that you provide those days off. And so, the philosophical change that we're looking at doing is, is moving away from a leave, sick leave type policy that's very defined on what a day can be used for and what a day can't be used for and moving it to more employee-friendly language with paid time off. And so, that, that's really, when you look at that, those two policies, that's, that's really the driver, is just that philosophical change to that paid time off and having more employee-friendly language. Any questions or any feedback you guys have? This is just a first read. So, any feedback you have, I'd love to take that and run it by MSBA and then bring it back to you guys for a second read at some point.
Was there a discussion with teachers on this?
We, we have not had like a sit-down, go and meet with them. The, the feedback that we've gotten has all been through that superintendent's advisory committee, which is made up of teachers. It's made up of custodians. It's made up of food service. I mean, it's, it's people from all across the district.
And I can also say that each year, MSTA or our teacher group, they, they put out a, have a survey issued on what benefits or what would you like to see changed? And it's resoundingly PTO. So, they have, not today or this specific right now, but over the past few years, they've, they've been asked. And in the survey, it says PTO.
And they're not losing anything. You're just making it easier for them to use.
Yes, exactly. Correct.
Yeah, which is really the modern trend and to comply, I mean, keep up with Prop A and all those sort of things out there. It just makes sense. To me, it just makes sense to make the change.
And there's no issue as they approach retirement and have changed basically for them where they've stacked a bunch of days. It should be the same.
No, because it just makes it easier for them to use. They're not losing anything.
You don't have to categorize and bind thick day versus.
The cat. Just combining. It's the same number of days. We're just removing just that caveat for your teachers that seven days. Just make it all ten.
I, I like the idea. I really like that, that it came from feedback. I love that.
It's just cleaner.
So, what I'll do is I'll take this and run it by MSBA, see, make sure that everything's still in compliance. And then, I would anticipate bringing this back for a second read to you all for an approval. In that event, please know I'll be transparent with you. We'll probably also have some job descriptions, as I mentioned, essential employees and, and the support staff one. So, I'll have, I have some job descriptions, too, that go along with this to all be approved. So. And I would ask, too, that we please wait on like making it like official until July one, just so that you don't have everybody pulling their hair out for the last month. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Dr. Cheswick, you're up. You got a couple in a row here. Start with Tiger Paw Playground.
You know, it's going to be long if I stand up. So, I want to start with one of the themes that's come out of the strategic planning is playgrounds. That's been a resounding as you listen to or as you look at surveys. So, the step that we're making tonight is the first step towards accomplishing that goal. So, I do appreciate the board putting it on as one of the action items from the remaining bond funds. And before we go to that one, I would like to point out that some of the other items that were selected, the tennis courts, they were opened a month ahead of time and we were able to have our last two. So, we only missed one home match meet this year. We had to redo the turn, redo the course. We did miss some practices, obviously, but we had a, Mr. Little had a great plan along with Coach Jenkins to make sure that we continued and we were practicing as we can. So, that was, that's complete. Please come next Tuesday. Everybody, for that, that's going to be a great opportunity. And then, the renewal on the Chillers East is started on Monday. It should be done tomorrow.
Good.
Now, the junior or the middle school, it's, we're going to start getting warm. So, we're going to hold off on that one until after summer school. But everything should be in place and that and going. So, we are moving ahead on those items. The other items, we're going, some of those other items are going to take care of today. So, Tiger Paw Playground, again, big item in the strategic planning department as well as a huge need as you look at the remodel there. I want to go through the process just so that everybody understands how inclusive this is. It's not only an inclusive playground, it was an inclusive process. So, we developed an RFP to include accessible features with ADA compliance, which really dictated how that was going to be designed. That is being built on a hill. They can only have a foot drop in the distance we're putting it. And there's a two-foot drop. So, there's a lot of obstacles we had to take, take care of. So, we made sure that was included in the RFP with accessibility, not just the playground equipment. We posted on our website, we had direct communication with our area vendors and posted in the Springfield Newsletter, Joplin Globe and Christian Kennedy Headliner for two weeks. That's not required. We just feel like that's good business practice to continue to do that. We toured four districts and six playgrounds. And when I say we toured, we spent a day and that was Dr. Sapperton, myself, along with ten members of Tiger Paw. And we looked at some really good playgrounds and we looked at some that we knew we didn't want anything to do with. So. But we had some really good ideas. Everybody had a score sheet. They scored every district, maybe not every playground, but they scored every district that we looked at. They added their likes, their dislikes. They made comments on accessibility, things such as curbing and, and ground level. And they, they did a really good job and I do appreciate their feedback for that. Had some great conversations at lunch and as we debriefed on that. The Tiger Paw team then met to discuss what they wanted and compiled a list of items. And that was independently without Dr. Sapperton and myself. They just met. They said, this is what we like, what we dislike. So, then we met with any team that wanted to do a pre-bid walkthrough. So, we sent out to RFP, anybody that contacted me. We took them out to the side, allowed them to look at it because there is some dirt that has to be moved. There's some existing ADA and accessibility issues. And this did include in the RFP to do something with the existing playground. So, we had several people take us up on that. I will say that the winning bid, as we look at it, did come out three times. And they took, they, they really did their due diligence. They, they surveyed it. They did elevation changes. They did a lot of good work. Bids were received and tabulated, which we'll look at in just a minute. After we tabulated the bids, we brought those back over to the Tiger Paw team. It was a reduced team. They already collected their data, but it was the administration team over there along with one of their physical OTPTs. OTs? The Tiger Paw. And then, so, and then, so we looked at it and we scored all of them. And as we look at the bid tabulation, the low bid was also the best bid, the best presentation. It had everything that they had on their list with the exception, it had shade, but they wanted more shade. So, remember, these are proposals, right? We didn't send out a specific, here's our specs and this is what we want you to build. We want you to tell us how you would do it. So, there were some features that, as we looked at the first one, that they just didn't really care for. They didn't like the color scheme. So, after we met and accepted the miracle that they would be ours, we sat down, I say we, Tiger Paw sat down with Miracle and they changed their design, the things that we wanted added. So, for example, there was one swing that was fully ADA wheelchair compliant. It's a great idea and it's a great thing. And at Tiger Paw, you know, we are still able to transfer students from their location into a swing. But that playground swing has to be set off by itself fenced in because it is basically a big metal slide. Swing that's just barely off the ground. You wheel, wheelchair onto it and then that becomes the apparatus. And especially with Tiger Paw, with little kids running around, that basically becomes a battering ram. So, that has to be fenced in, which adds to the cost. And there's a whole process and procedure for when it's not used, how to secure it. And you take up a lot of playground space. So, that was taken out and some other items were added. But that's how we got to the final product, project, which is, as you look at the bid tab, the lowest bid, the lowest overall bid is Miracle, which was three hundred and eighteen thousand ninety-two for the front and a hundred and eighty-six thousand two hundred and eighty for the back. So, that is a full remodel of the back. It's tearing out the swings and the existing, with the exception of anything to the east of that sidewalk that runs north-south. That's, there's two balance beams, a dome and some other little things over there. That'll still remain in mulch. Everything else will be tore out and replaced as we're going to see in just a minute. But if you look at the totals, so it's not the, when you look at that last column, you'll notice that like Park and Play, it's, it's lower than Miracle, but it doesn't include any remodel in the back. And that's, we're making that playground, that, that building fully ADA accessible. So, this is the final design after the team compiled, after the Tiger Paw team compiled all their likes, dislikes of what they saw. And this is the new playground. It has an app, it has a large apparatus that is wheelchair accessible all the way to the highest point, which is good. It has some small features, that one tan item gives some independent play. And then, a merry-go-round, which, you know, some of us will think back in time when those were outlawed. But as you notice, they're different now. The, think this is a laser? Yeah. This is an actual merry-go-round. It's great. It's ground level. Wheelchairs will come onto it. It's accessible. And then, you can't take your ropehead and hook it to it and get it going as fast as you can because you used to have books on. And then you can't take your moped and hook it to it and get it going as fast as you can. It's used to that book. So. I'm dating myself, but, um, you can't do that anymore. So that's there. And then swings and then just some, and there's, and I couldn't tell you how many we finished, but there's a lot of interactive play panels all the way through there. And part of accessible and, uh, just meeting the needs of students is having a variety of those. Those are tactile, they're visual and there's some audio, audible ones. So there's a lot of different sensory, uh, things going on. So that's the new playground. Uh, that'll go, uh, basically just off to the south of the new rear entrance. And then to redo the existing one, like I said, they're gonna tear out the swings and the existing apparatus. They're gonna level it. They're gonna move it towards the building. And if you can think about that. Right now it's kind of, you come out the concrete area between the storm shelter and the old building. You walk down that concrete area. And then you go up the hill just a little ways to the play areas. It makes visually a supervision. You can't have kids over on the concrete and on the playground at the same time. And it's a lower, it's an easier elevation. We think about the change in elevation, the one degree we can have. They're gonna move it next to the building. And when they do that, then we're gonna go ahead and, uh, clear up the rest of that area and turn it back into grass. There is a proposal, uh, and PTA is here tonight. Um, they want to provide some shade. They're actually doing a fundraiser right now to do that. And they already have some funds, um. In the final proposal, we have that number of what it costs to install that and to, to purchase that. So we'll be working with them. Uh, and if they would like to put in some turf there, uh, that would be great too. But we'll work through all of those details. I do wanna point out that the process, you know, one of the things that this playground, they felt didn't have enough of was shade. The one that we're adding is on the west or north side of the building. And there's a lot of shade over there most of the day. So, uh, the play, the equipment, the big apparatus has shade on it. And there's shade that, the, the pouring place is gonna go all the way next to the building. So the building on it, the building eaves is actually gonna provide additional shade as well. This side of the building is facing to the south. And so that's why we put a canopy, uh, over this swing set. And then that's why, uh, PTA is so kind and generous in looking at how we can add to that additional, uh, shade for students and staff. This is exciting. Uh, most of all, this is exciting. And when you look at, so when you look at this and think, okay, so why did I say seven hundred thousand? Well, there's a six ninety-three on there. There's a six ninety-three. There's a five twenty-five, a six ninety-nine, a five ninety-six, seven. There's a big range. And we knew that we were gonna get some, uh, up in the seven hundred, uh, close to the seven hundred range. So we budgeted for that. The initial was at five twenty-five, three seventy-two. Again, remember these are proposals, right? So we have some, well, we didn't really, we liked the idea of the fully wheelchair accessible slot or swing. But in evaluating the use of the, the land and the, the risk associated with it, we want that out. So the final is five thou, five hundred fifty-seven thousand, seventy dollars. Which puts us under budget by about a hundred, not by, about a hundred and forty-two thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars. So, um, Dr., uh, this is what we talked about. Do you wanna come and talk for just a minute?
So as this process has gone on, it was really important for me to make sure, um, we included our staff in this conversation. And so whenever we were gonna get a committee together, I just opened it up and said, who wants to participate? Well, the whole staff is so excited, right? Like they feel honored that you guys recognize the need and privileged that we get to go through this process. I was really cognizant of making sure that each group was represented because we have a variety of students within our building. And so our teachers, we don't have grade levels. Obviously we're just early childhood. But we have teacher teams based on student skills and needs. And so each teacher team was represented within our committee. And then I specifically tapped in like our occupational therapist, our physical therapist. And then we also have a staff member who has a parent, who's a parent of a child that uses a motorized wheelchair. And so she has a unique perspective on that. As we were going to these, um, playgrounds and seeing, you think you know what you want until you really see it. And then you're like, like I thought turf was great. I got shocked so many times on the pieces of play equipment because the static electricity was dragging under my feet. And of course then I'm like, well, okay, this kid walks this way. So then I have to, my wrist hurt for like thirty minutes afterwards. We're like, we don't want that. Um, the funniest part to me was that we got to see kids at play at some of these playgrounds and my staff was like questioning them and like, what's your favorite part? Where do you wanna go? And so we really incorporated that feedback too, um, whenever we were considering. Now we've seen these in action. How does that change our opinion? And it really made a difference on what we thought we wanted versus what we now recognize maybe is not the right choice for our school. So I feel like that gives us a head start on, on making a choice of what's gonna work well for our students. Um, and then the whole conversation about the specific wheelchair swing, it was really enlightening because yes, we wanted that as an option, but then when we recognized that we wanted that because right now that's the only thing our kids can do. That is the only piece of equipment they can access. But now they can get into those adaptive swings and they can access this whole piece of play equipment. And, and engage in it and truly be a part of recess. And so it, that was an easy adjustment as we were going forward because we recognized that that was old thinking. We have to think differently about it now. Because we have totally shifted the conversation with what they have access to and how they're gonna interact with peers. And how they're gonna move forward with their motor development and that social development and all of those pieces. And so I feel like our staff felt very, um, excited to be a part of the process and have their word, uh, recognized as important because they're the ones out there with the kids every day, you know, recognizing their needs. And so whenever we first looked at the bid, I think there were tears because we weren't anticipating the back playground at all. And so to be able to incorporate that, now you don't have an old playground and a new playground. And who gets to go to the new playground and who has to go to the old playground? We're really talking about equity, right? We're talking about all of our students get access to new updated equipment that are targeting motor skills, that are targeting these foundational pieces that are necessary for growth and future academic success. And so I, I can't tell you, I can represent my team and just tell you how much we appreciate it. That we feel valued within this and that our students are valued because it's gonna impact thousands of Ozark students that go through Tiger Paw.
That's good.
Throughout the years, thousands and thousands. And so we definitely felt like it was a really high priority and we appreciate that you guys recognize that as well. And so at this point, I just wanna pinch myself because I don't feel like it's real. Um, but it's probably the most exciting professional thing that I've gone through as an administrator at this point, just because it's been such a high priority for us for so many years. And so it's a great day to be an Ozark Tiger, for sure.
Yeah, I just wanna say, yes, good. I love that so much that the, the teachers who work with the kids and the staff who know the most of what's needed, were willing to participate. We're willing to, to give up their time. We're excited to participate because they care about the kids so much and they know exactly what the kids need. Um, that's exactly what needs to happen all the time. Thank, thank you guys for doing that. Those, and it's not just have fun at playground. Those are educationally developmental skills. Those large motor skills, especially when they're so young are so important for, I'm a high school math teacher or a college math teacher, but they need those elementary preschool. They need those large motor things. I'm so glad you guys advocated for that.
At, at our level, recess is instructional time. Like we have people collect goals, like data on goals for those types of things. Like that is instruction. Teachers are out there instructing.
Yes.
And so it's, it's a classroom, you know, it really is.
Thank you for advocating for your kids, for your students.
Yeah, one, uh, you mentioned the shade, the, that they were trying to get another shade and this, is this not? Answering that, I see an option for shade coming. Can we include that on here?
Yeah. So in the, uh, the, there, the PTA is funding, they, they have for years driven for that. So that's, that's something that they want to fund.
Right. What, what if they don't? What if they can't fund it?
What if we funded it?
Can't we just, can't we just do it now? I mean?
We, we could do that now and then they would.
I don't wanna, I just don't wanna risk that we're building this new thing and we, oh, well, we wanted the shade, but we, we spent five hundred, but we couldn't spend that. That's what I'm saying.
So we could, we could up that to by that price. And then if they come, it, when they come through,
Yeah.
Uh, then we can reduce it by that or we can tell them to find something else to put it towards. What would you ladies like to do?
Yeah, what would they like?
Dr. Dawson, do you want the shade?
Yeah.
What's the cost?
Eighteen, it's on that one sheet. Um, if you bring back up.
That's right here.
It's eighteen thousand.
Yeah.
And some change. So I, and on that note, I do wanna point out one more thing. This is important. Uh, Elizabeth, uh, Dr. Dawson kept asking, why are these trash cans there? We don't need trash cans. We do need trash cans because our playgrounds are community spaces. That playground is not a community space right now because, well, we just don't have anything of desire or anything for the community. Once this is in place, if you think about the location, we will have a gate and it will be open after hours when students are not there, just like our other playgrounds. And this honestly, um, when you listen to the teachers, they kept talking about the Nixa Park, the Nixa Park, not so much the schools, but there was the Nixa Park, the Nixa Park. This will be a high, and this won't be high traffic for two to five-year-olds. This will be high traffic for two to 10-year-olds. Uh, it is all safe for two to five. That's what it's designed for. But there's enough on there that swings that, look, kids are gonna play here. So that's why the trash can, so it's gonna be open for the communities. So, uh, if we do that, then my recommendation would be to approve the five, uh, Miracle as our vendor for five hundred fifty-seven thousand and seventy dollars with the additional option of the swing, or sorry, of the shade.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I'll second. Or did you already second?
Yeah, I second.
Okay.
Does that matter? Oh, um, we have a motion and a second by James. Our motion by Christina second.
Oh, no, motion by Matt.
Or Matt, sorry, Matt.
You're kind of failing already. You just started.
So there's that chicken, there's that chicken.
Yeah, there we go. All right, I, um.
All in favor?
All in favor? Yeah. All right, let's unanimous.
Please come to the Tiger Paw walkthrough on May fifteenth. Thank you.
As in, just a note to the PTA in the back, you guys are amazing. We know that you guys are. You put in a lot of selfless hours and, uh, I probably speak on behalf of everybody. Thank you. Um, you guys are truly awesome.
That's right. That's right. All right. Next up is.
Equally as important, less sexy.
Less fun.
Five.
Roof bids. So our roof bids are, were opened and again, field work, the, the process was field work and design specs were done, were completed by Estrickly Snyder. Um, you know, this was a project that was approved back in late winter. It was January. Uh, they came out and finished all their field work, went out to bid. Then we sent out through a website, job posting sites and direct contact advertised as required. We had a pre-bid walkthrough with multiple companies. Tom, I think we had seven. Is that correct? We had seven companies and when we look at our roof bids, that was the most comprehensive, um, from north, middle school, east and south. That was the most comprehensive group of people that comes there to do that. They said the things we knew they were gonna say. Short window, I'm already booked. It's gonna take too many, it's gonna take two crews. We're, so we had a lot of the things that we knew were gonna be there. But we still had three quality bids come in, uh, really quality bids. Um, the lowest bidder was asked to separate. So we had that bid out as, there was two parts to it. There was the base bid and then there was the alternate number one. Alternate number one included some areas that we had just re-roofed and are under warranty. Um, and then two additional areas that were right next to that. So, uh, we asked the lowest bidder, which is Joplin Roofing, if they would split those two areas out, which were A, B and C. And with those totals, the lowest bid, uh, combined was one thousand, a hundred and seventy-nine thou, sorry, one million, seven hundred ninety-seven thousand, four hundred dollars. Which remember we had anticipated each of those, uh, independently, bidding it out over two years. That total would have been almost two million. We knew that there was gonna be a 10% savings by combining them because you didn't have to re-mobilize and, and everything was there. Uh, and also you'd have a markup for that second year of additional cost. So, uh, we were, we were anticipating it's to be somewhere around, uh, 1.7. We ended up at 1.657640 for the actual bid. And that includes all areas that have not been re-roofed and currently under warranty. The two areas that, uh, we have re-roofed, uh, are completely still under warranty by Cardinal. And they have another 13 years on that warranty. This is a 20-year warranty. So that roof will be in great shape. Uh, going forward, once this is complete, once again, underestimate, under, under the estimate of about 300, not about three hundred thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars. So, uh, Estrickly Snyder's here with Tom. If you have any questions about the specs or the process, we can help you out. Yes, ma'am.
I know you said it includes all sections except for the ones that were, but I just wanna make sure there's no other portion of that high school roof has leaked for so many years, very badly. Kids' backpacks get wet sitting on the floor in the hallway for years.
All non-metal roofs.
That's what I wanna know. So what, what, what else is there?
Thing that has a metal panel on it, uh, which they're still in great shape. So the metal panels, which are some, some overhangs, uh, I believe the office complex is under a metal, uh, metal roof, but as long as it's, if it's a TPO membrane, which is the white membrane, all of that has been replaced or will be replaced.
And that includes around the different things that sit up on top that sometimes the water runs underneath those and so every single part.
Every place that has TPO will be replaced or has been been replaced.
Are there any leaks anywhere that's not TPO?
We'll find out if there's any of the metal roof. It could, it could be leaking through a washer on one of the metal, uh, and those will be easy to identify at this point. But at this point, if those existed, they've been taken care of.
Okay. Okay. I just wonder, cause every year we work a little bit more on a part of the high school roof and that's important.
Yeah, but 1.657 million dollars takes care of.
Good.
Plus the, plus the metal roofing that will have to be replaced.
Good, good. Needs to. Uh, can I say one more thing?
Yes, ma'am.
Thanks. I'm just.
Okay.
So I've heard people saying, what, what are you doing with all that extra money? Why didn't you spend it a different way? This is not extra money. This is bond money that was voted to be used for repairs and reconstruction and remodeling, things that were needed. And so this is, the playground is exactly what's needed. The roof is exactly, the tennis courts, I mean, all of the different things were needed to be repaired. And I mean, this was essential.
I, I think so, yes.
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion. I second. We have a motion by Matt. All right, all in favor? Passes unanimously. Next is the Tiger Stadium Video Board.
Yes. So again, on the process, just to make sure everybody knows that this was inclusive. Uh, we posted an RFP, an RFP was, was created, uh, with options for nineteen by thirty-five and seventeen by thirty. The nineteen by thirty-five actually had two options. One was to use the existing frame and the second one was to replace the, the frame. So we had, uh, two sizes of video boards, uh, in there or equivalent size. You know, it's like Vina TV. Not everybody's exactly the same size. So, uh, nineteen by thirty-five could be twenty by thirty-six and you'll see that in the, the bid numbers. We posted on our website, direct communication with area vendors and posting Springfield Newsletter, Joplin Globe and the Christian County Headliner for two weeks. Uh, team including administration, applicable coaches, uh, maintenance tech and scoreboard operators were invited. We toured three districts. Um, we saw the Taj Mahal of video boards and then we saw, you know, what we could, what, what we could afford and what looks good, what would look good for us. Um, we, uh, picked their brains. We talked, we didn't just look at them. We talked to the operators of them. We talked to the, the people that provide the advertising for them. Uh, and we got the ins and outs and the good and the bad of, of all of them. We received bids and we evaluated those based on the criteria. Now this is a confusing rubric, so this will take a minute, but I want everybody to understand how we ended up where we got. So, as you can see, we had five vendors, Ace, Nevco, KCAV. as you can see, we had five vendors, Ace, Nevco, KCAV, Daktronics and Digital Scoreboard. The prices, uh, all fell within two ninety, two hundred ninety four thousand to three hundred and seventy five thousand. Our original bid estimate was provided to us by one of the vendors that's on there for a much smaller board and that was three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. We knew that we could get them down if we, uh, put it out to bid. And they did come down on that one, um, but you see the range. And next to it is a price. So in our rubric, we said price is twenty percent. Rubric is the largest component of what we made our decision on. As you can see, there's not a huge difference in prices other than, um, the, the one that is seventy five thou, they're seventy five thousand higher than the lowest, almost eighty thousand dollars, more than eighty thousand. So when we called references, we either talked to them in person, when we went on our tour, or we called them, or in, in some cases, and in some cases, we used our own internal references. We use several of those companies. And we have a favorable, or not favorable opinion of some of those areas of service. So in talking to them, we had one that stood out and that's Digital Scoreboard. Um, matter, the last question that I asked as we were leaving, uh, one of the stadiums that had a digital scoreboard in it, and that, and that's confusing, that's the company, Digital Scoreboard. Um, they, I said, you've said everything positive, give me one negative. They could not give a negative. Uh, so when you look at reliability, that you'll, you'll, that'll be highlighted as well. Um, when we asked them how it ran, they turned that on and they have seven of those boards, uh, across the district, some are internal, some are external. But the one we were looking at was on one of their football fields and it had not been turned off since installation. And it only went off twice when there's citywide power outages and then it went off. They use it, uh, twenty-four seven for advertising, for, uh, publish, just for color, just to, to show school spirit, but also to publicize events. Um, so when you look at references and reliability, that company stood out beyond everybody else. So that's why their score is higher than the other ones, not that the other ones, um, they were acceptable. I mean, I've called references for eighteen years and, and there were some things that you would expect to hear and some things that, you know, were, were extremely positive, but they were just kinda right there in the middle. Creation management is one of the big things. That's why we included tech. Uh, our tech was only, he was actually ill that day, so he was unable to attend, but we came back and we showed him the software. Uh, we're currently using Scorevision and Daktronic software across the district, so we know that it functions. That's why they got a five. When you look at the other two, they got a three because on, on paper, it says it works, uh, but I can tell you, and I'm sure, uh, Robert, uh, could tell you as well, saying it works doesn't mean it always works. It's gotta be proven for us to give it the top rating. So, um, that's why there's scored down a little bit. So that's what the existing means. Are we currently using it? The specs, so we have nineteen by thirty six, everything else was nineteen by thirty five. The knit is the brightness, the higher the number, the better. Uh, all of these have either manual or there's automatic lightening and brightening depending on the time of day, time of night. So if we put it on ten thousand nits in the day, we're gonna see it. If we put it on ten thousand nits during a football game, referees may tell us to turn it down. So, uh, we, we know that, so ten thousand nits is, is the, is the high benchmark. So they got fives. If everybody else hit the mark, except they were at eight thousand, they got a three. Technical support, I'm telling you, this is a scary thing for me. Because we're taking away the scoreboard. And our current board, I was here for the implementation of it. And I can tell you from the implementation from day one, that board, the video portion has functioned spotting. And so for us to put a board in place, I know that if there's not a game clock on that board, we don't have a football game. So this really scared me. So when you look at the technical support, that's a keynote, just along with reliability. At the, the winner, uh, again, is, is Digital Scoreboard. That's a hundred and forty-two techs in a sixty mile radius, twenty-four seven with remote camera for diagnosis. That's incredible. Uh, our current board, we used to have a tech in place. We no longer, that company that we currently use, doesn't even, doesn't even employ techs in the area. They use third party to come in. And so this is a big relief and I know that I'll be sitting in the stands next year and I won't be in the booth. Uh, but that is exciting. That's exciting. And I know I'm nerding out on the technical support, but warranty as well, they were the winner eleven year parts, five year labor on site. They scored the highest on that. And also when you look at the software, this software is, uh, we're currently using it in our ox, in our new, uh, storm shelter. It is, it allows students to do the creation of the ads over in Mr. Jenkins and Mr. Jean's room. They load it to the web. It automatically goes there and whoever's running the iPad in the booth, it goes to the scoreboard instantaneously. It's all, it's seamless and it's great. Again, along with the software for managing time and, and distance as well. And then the rest of that is just information about power to make sure it was there. And then outdoor rating, of course. And if you look at that, Digital Scoreboard by far with four point ten, uh, came in to the lead, uh, as the vendor of choice. So when you look at sizes, I know that someone may think, well, how, what does that look like in comparison? Uh, we are the Missouri State or we are the Show Me State. So I just wanna give some examples. Uh, Branson is installing one at sixteen by thirty. Excuse me. And we're nineteen by, nineteen by thirty-five. So we're there at Branson sixteen by thirty, Web City seventeen by thirty. Uh, Republic is fifteen by twenty-five. Joplin is a bigger board. But I'll tell you that it's also not ten, uh, millimeter. With you, if I stand below a ten millimeter board and I look up, it looks like a blackboard. I don't know, I, if it's sixteen or twenty-four millimeters, but it's a lot higher, a lot less of a pixel count. That the LEDs are much larger, which means less resolution. Some other ones in the areas, I mean, in this, everything else is, is much smaller. When you look at some of these other districts that have them. Springfield, for example, uh, which is part of the COC now. Um, when you look at their bo, boards, they're thirteen by thirty-two. Rogersville fourteen by twenty-five, which is the new one, West Plains thirteen by twenty-five. The one that is equal to us is not installed yet and it's actually a digital, uh, scoreboard product as well. And that's the same board being installed in the Osho right now. So it's the same size. So my recommendation would be to, uh, let me, let me give the numbers because we're, the budget on this was three hundred thousand. So I always come to you under budget, I'm coming to you over budget. We could hit the fourteen by twenty-five and be in budget. We could do that. Uh, when you look at what fifty-four thousand dollars gets you in comparison, I would make the argument, and so would Nancy Little, uh, Dr. Wilson, and I think anybody else that did the tour, would say that the wow factor and what is gonna make the difference at nineteen by thirty-five is worth that. So the others, now remember, we just took eighteen thousand out of one of these, so make that adjustment in your head. Uh, but we were under on the others by four hundred eighty-two thousand, three hundred seventy-six dollars. So even taking out that extra fifty-four, we're four hundred twenty-eight thousand dollars under our estimates on the projects that we've listed so far, which is the, um, tennis courts, our newls at East and the middle school, the playgrounds, the, and the roof, we're that much under. So it'd be just, just over four hundred thousand dollars that we're still under our estimates on. So my recommendation, my, the committee's recommendation would be to accept the Digital Scoreboard bid for three hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars.
Doctor Wilson, I know, um, the common, and, and all of us probably still do this, cause we're, we're older, but we think we're replacing a scoreboard. But we're not going back with a scoreboard. We're going back with a digital board that is, uh, uh, the scoreboard is a scoreboard. It's got a, a capability.
Right.
What we're going back with is something, they're, they're not, one is not, it's apples and oranges. It's really apples and watermelons, right? And the, the aspect of what we're going back with doesn't have, it, it has a much broader scale of use that's going to impact, um, virtually, uh, uh, several other organizations, students, et cetera. So, you know, uh, I, I've heard and just so, oh, we're, we're scoreboard and some things along that nature. That's really not what we're doing. And I thought maybe just for some clarity for some people, you might speak to kinda like, hey, this isn't really, we're not going back with this. We're going back with something that is going to give us a, a, a much broader use.
That's, that's really true. Uh, when we went and toured the schools to look at, to look at their, uh, digital boards, I kept thinking scoreboard and the gentleman from Springdale was like, this is not a scoreboard. You have to think this is a digital board. And that this, there's gonna be so many more implications and, uh, ways that you can use it. He actually said, and correctly if I'm wrong, Curtis, he actually said that the football portion of it is probably one of the lower amount of times that the score, this digital board is in use. That, uh, they use it, you know, especially when, when the kids are creating content for that and, um, you know, with your, with the cheerleaders, with the dancers, with soccer, with anyone who uses that field, they're going to be using this board. Uh, he also mentioned that they use it for, um, field trips. Because the board is almost like a, an IMAX theater for them. And they have field trips for their students to come to the football field and to watch movies or rewards or something. I, I think you, everybody's gonna be highly, highly impressed with this. It is, it was, all of them were amazing. Track and field, right. Oh, yeah.
So also when you look at football, for example, I, looks like you played football. I'm assuming you played football. Uh,
Just that joke?
That's it, that's it. We looked like. So when, when you would go watch video, you would go to the locker room and watch video on a Saturday and then come back on Monday. And then before a, a practice, you might watch and say, okay, so this is what Nix is gonna run against us. Now, the coach has an iPad. It's directly connected to the board. They're running Nix's offense. And we're watching it and then we go play defense against that. And it's big enough that you can see the detail of where you're supposed to be and where you're not supposed to be.
Band would have that.
Band.
Ability, things like that. Rotsey while halftime, we can show all the things that ROTC's doing in the celebration while they're out there performing. I mean, the, the.
Envision lots of hype videos.
Yes.
You know, and, and
We're all on.
For all, for everyone, not just for football or basketball, but for everyone.
I had the opportunity this last year to attend, um, every away game for football. And several of the other districts had these boards. And let me tell you, they are amazing. They've got, um, cameras trained on the crowd. They got the crowd into the game. Um, they had different songs playing on it, different videos and it, it just, it brought the whole community together. People were in the stands doing the wave. It was awesome.
Yeah.
You mentioned the market, uh, marketing. What, what's the potential for using this for, to, you know, make money or advertise stuff like that?
Offset the cost a little bit.
It's unlimited. I mean, it's an unlimited opportunity because it's, it's video. It's not a static advertisement. So you can sell them. You could rotate them. You can make them dance. You can make them big. You can make them small. I mean, there's gonna be lots of opportunities.
And they can run twenty-four hours if that's what we chose to do. You know, they have the board. Um, it, it was running constantly. The, the one that we really saw as far, you know, nothing was static. Um, you would go and it was changing in your eye. You know, when you looked at, what, looked at it once and then you looked at it again, it could have been the same advertisement, but it was in a different place. So you're noticing it. And, um, they, Springdale, where we went, they run their board twenty-four seven, as he said. But at night, what they will do is we would just put the Ozark O after a certain point, so that anyone that drove by, you knew that this was Ozark. So it's also a way of branding. I mean, I can really see this with branding our district and bringing more marketability to it. Um, you have to be able to have, uh, program in place to go out to make sure that we have, um, the ability or the right person to find, um, people to buy advertisement on this. But at Springdale, they have such a, a bigger market than what we did. He had his digital boards paid for in three years. So there's definitely potential. He said, what did he say? It was about the only thing on their campus that generated revenue.
And they, they have a different model. It gen, generated enough income
Yep.
to pay for helmet reconditioning.
Turf.
Uniforms, you know, so.
Pretty substantial cost, items.
Yeah.
Now, I, I, I go back to, they are a bigger area than us, but it is definitely has the ability to, uh, have a revenue stream.
So, looking for a recommendation to accept the.
I'll make a motion.
I second.
Great, we have a motion and a second, all in favor. That passes unanimously.
Do you wanna talk about the money we have left over and maybe we can, enough to fund projects? Oh, we have one more note.
Actually, it's great. Thank you. So we have about four hundred thousand dollars left over. And if you think back to the list of needs that we have, um, there are definitely some other listed on there. And so I know we have a work session coming up and this would be a great opportunity to talk about, you know, how, I know that this is just, uh, one of the things that we've hit is on the listening tour, are these acceptable playgrounds? That's on the list. I know from the bids we got that that will take care of one of our high, high needs, but that's.
At East Elementary?
East, uh, that, that'd be, East would be the, the place that'd be, but that's, like, that would be a good discussion for our work session. Um, to where, where do we go next? So, but
Thank you.
But all of that, that, because of the good work of the teachers.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
If a, if a teacher or a coach or someone wanted to present a project, do they just contact you?
Oh, a what?
A project for consideration during that work session, or is it too late?
It's never too late, you know what I mean? So.
Do they contact you? Who do they contact?
They, they do. You go through their building administrator.
Through their building.
And we had items left on our list.
Yes, I know. Yes.
All right, the next item on our list is the Cox Health, Health MOU.
There's no money on this one. This is just an agreement. As you know, we partner with Cox Health and a lot of our students are up there. Uh, so our students go up there as, as simple as job shadows. Um, and so, you know, this agreement's just gonna kinda cut that HR, the red tape. It's, it's Cox knows what they're getting and, and we've told our students kinda how to act and behave and whatnot. But the biggest part of this is, as you know, we're starting a, a brand new CMA program. So we're a certified medical assistance program. And, uh, that's going through approval, approval right now. And so we will have students in this program. Uh, I think we have fourteen students this year testing, um, for that certification. But as it grows, these students will need to get in roughly a hundred and twenty hours as an internship or as, uh, clinical hours. And so Cox Health says we have plenty of room for them. So this agreement's gonna allow all of our students to, you know, and I have to go through whatever process. Cox again knows what they're getting and we have some skin in the game and say, we're gonna send you, you know, these quality students. Uh, but our students will spend, like I said, a hundred and twenty hours for the year. And so they'll have instructional time here with, uh, Ms. Throck Martin. They'll spend a hundred and twenty hours for the year at, on grounds at Cox Health or one of the clinics somewhere through Cox Health. Uh, and then they'll take their, their exam at the end of the year and then they'll leave with an I R, IRC, that industry recognized credential. So, uh, Certified Medical Assistance, a much needed, uh, uh, program or certifications in our area. So it will, this agreement takes care of that. It will lead into, hopefully will lead into, um, Cox has also partnered with us and other area schools on a, what's called a, a unit assistant one and a unit assistant two. Some of you may or may not have a, a daughter that's in that, going into that program. But it's because of what we're doing here, Cox has reserved some spots for us. And that's not necessarily what this agreement is, but it's some of those opportunities. So we have students right now, we have twelve students that were hired in January that are working at Cox, getting paid at Cox to be a unit assistant. Seven of those twelve in July will go into unit assistant two, still making money at Cox. We already have seven kids hired, um, for the July program as well, uh, which will, I'm sorry, I apologize. Eleven students hired in July. That's gonna be cohort number two, basically. So twelve kids started in, in January, seven of them will continue in July and we have a whole nother. So 12 kids started in in January, seven of them will continue in July, and we have a whole nother 11 students starting in July as well. And so anyway, these opportunities that are created for our kids and other kids in Southwest Missouri. Uh, so I think this partnership's great. This agreement's great, helping cut that red tape. But it's also keeping both sides kind of legal and you know what you're doing. You just have people on your campus um, and or the campus at Cox. And, uh, so it just creates those guidelines. So, again, no money involved, just that that agreement. Questions on the MOU with Cox Health?
I noticed on this page, uh, three COVID vaccine, is that still a requirement?
I don't, what, how's it read? I don't, I don't, I'm not looking at it right now.
It says, school shall furnish Cox Health proof of each student's and faculty members COVID-19 vaccine status or a signed statement declining the COVID-19 vax.
I'd have to look specifically on our attorney and look through that. So I don't know how to answer that right now. I'd have to check on that as far as.
But that Cox stopped doing that.
Yeah, I don't know that we want to force our kids to disclose one way or the other.
Yeah.
I don't think that's a requirement.
Yeah.
If it's not a requirement for the hospital, it won't be a requirement for our kids. Uh, so in the past, when we have put, uh, kids, as we've talked about it, Cox has said if they're gonna be with patients like their staff would be, then we would, they would be the same requirements. So I don't know that COVID-19 is a requirement anymore, but, uh, that's a great question.
Yeah, I don't think it's. I can find that out 100% for her.
I just got an answer from a nurse. She said it's not, it's not a requirement.
Perfect.
So if it's not, I mean, can we take that out?
Can we strike that? We can look to remove that.
Oh, you just.
Yeah, I just.
Oh, I was like, I just.
Yep, I will double check on that for sure.
I don't think it is. But we could, um, move to approve that minus that portion, correct?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. And we, as within the MOU, it goes back and forth and it goes through a lot of red lines as well. Then we keep sending them back and forth through legal counsel or whatnot. So we can definitely, uh, look at that and have that removed if that's how it's worked. We'd already removed, there was a piece about, um, criminal background check. Uh, obviously, if we have students under 18, they're not doing that. So that was a red line in there or reworded in there. So we can definitely reword that vaccine part. Any other questions?
I think it's an excellent program.
Yeah. For certain.
I would entertain a motion to approve this minus that portion at this point.
I'll second it.
I have to, you want to make the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor. Passes unanimously.
Do you want to specify which section that was?
It was page, page three.
Yeah.
B, it's numbered.
Cooperative Agreement to F B two, I mean, do we need to tell all of those numbers?
Three B two.
It was under section F. And then sub subsection B and then subsection II. It's in the middle of page three.
COVID part.
You got all that, Mark?
Sorry, I didn't know if you needed to know which part we wanted to say.
Mark, I have to go with these.
All right. Next thing is the Coca-Cola contract.
Okay, um, I asked for approval for the Coca-Cola contract. We did, uh, talk with Coca-Cola and we did talk with Pepsi. And, um, it was if we had gone with Pepsi, we would have had to have given up Dr. Pepper.
Which is a problem, right? It's a real thing.
So apparently it's a problem.
It is.
It's all you had to say.
That is all I had to say. I mean, um, and you know, so it is a five-year agreement. We've had a five-year agreement in the past. This also, um, it's, you know, we have, we would use Coke exclusively throughout the district as we already do and have in the past. And this also, um, works in a way that the money that we earn on this goes to our activity accounts so that our buildings, um, can do things with their teachers and their students. So, um, there's nothing now that ordinary on this, um, pretty cut and dry of what's been done in the past.
Make a motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor. Passes unanimously.
And who knew Dr. Pepper was that popular? It is our highest selling, uh, out of the, out of this line. It's the highest selling.
By a lot of it.
Yeah, best, quite a bit, quite a bit. So Gerald, this is off of Gerald.
We're all looking at Gerald.
All right.
But do you like the Blackberry?
Okay, um, the next is the speech language pathologist salary scale adjustment.
Laura assures me that I have all this. So, um, although I'm not an expert with speech language pathologist, uh, we are asking the board to reclassify, uh, the SLP position. Um, I have both salary schedules. The current salary schedule the teachers are on is the teaching salary schedule. And then also you have the, um, exempt salary schedule that we would like to move SLPs to. Um, I won't go through everything in the memo and rehash that, but there are, there's a description in the memo about Desi reclassifying SLPs. And so part of that classification changes the different, um, certifications that SLPs have to have to the state. And so because of their more professional staff, uh, with their classification, we're asking the board, uh, move SLPs from the teacher's schedule to that exempt salary schedule, um, with range for calm at being that schedule that the SLPs will be on. Be happy to answer any questions. If you have deep specific questions about SLPs, I'm sure Laura will answer those, so.
And this is for next year?
Correct, yes. This is FY '26, starting July 1st.
I have a question. I'm very in favor of this because that's such a specialized skill. But just for reference, do you happen to know anything about the surrounding districts and how their salaries for SLPs are?
Yeah, so in general, I can tell you that other districts, um, have stipends, different schedules and stuff. So some of this request is to also compete with those surrounding districts to ensure that we are paying a salary that's comparable. Um, you know, right now I will tell you that the current salary they're on is not comparable. Um, and when we can't find SLPs, we have to contract those SLPs. And those can run anywhere from $60 to $90 an hour. So it is, it's much a, a much fiscally responsible solution to find those who work for us full-time in-house. They're trying to find contracted SLPs.
Good, thank you. All right.
I move that we adopt that, approve that salary schedule adjustment for the 25, 26 SLPs.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Dustin. All in favor? Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have our master's cohort agreement.
So since 2012, we have had a master's program cohort with, uh, agreements with, uh, local universities. The university that we are currently using is Evangel. Prior to that university, we were, uh, with Lindenwood University. So, uh, you'll click on that. So pull it up. So we sent out a, um, a request for bid to, uh, five local universities and MSU did not submit one. But we had jury, Evangel, Lindenwood, and SBU. And so we looked at them in terms of type of program they have, how many program hours, uh, total cost of the program, who teaches those classes. So our goal is to have as much liberty as possible on our end. So we can, uh, craft those courses to, uh, mimic the kinds of processes that we use inside our district. Uh, so we have had over the last, um, 12, 13 years, we have had 137 staff members go through our master's program. Uh, inside of that, um, well, before we started it in the COC, we had the least amount of teachers who had a master's. That's a number published from Desi. And so we were, uh, we were the least among the COC. Now we are, uh, I should have looked at that number. Uh, we're in the 70 percents, uh, now, I think. And that's, I haven't looked at it in a while. Uh, what is good about having this program is, uh, it comes out of professional development funds. And we are required by law to spend so much professional development funds. So it's, uh, not, uh, it is a part of those funds that we need to spend for professional learning. It's a, uh, specific to the kinds of curriculum development we do. It's specific to, uh, what we work on with discipline, how we do collaboration, uh, what we look at for communication. So we have our administrators, uh, other staff members, we teach the courses. And it's all around the kinds of processes that we and our community would appreciate. And so, um, we're looking at the university that gives us the most leverage to do that. And so we looked at that part. We also looked at, uh, uh, just overall costs and other hidden fees. And so when you look at all of that, you will notice that, uh, uh, Evangel was the, uh, choice and they, uh, beat SBU, uh, roughly about $1,000 per person over the, uh, for the whole masters. And so we recommend that we go with Evangel University and continue that partnership. And that would take it through another three cycles, which would be about six years.
I have a question.
Yep, question.
This might not be the time to discuss it. Is, what are the parameters for being involved in that program? Do you have to be here a certain number of years? Do you have to stay here a certain number of years after you finish?
Sure, I'll, uh,
Here's the application that they filled out. So you can see the questions that each teacher fills out. So far, we, uh, we have 25 teachers who apply for this round. We have, uh, last round, we had 24 teachers. So we're up one. We haven't closed applications yet. Uh, and you can see the questions, uh, is really looking at how involved are the teachers in the district? So we ask things like what kind of professional learning have you offered? What kinds of committees do you serve on? Uh, is, what is your track record for those things? How many hours have you tutored? So we're looking for teachers who are heavily involved and are not just involved uh, with students, but we're also looking for teachers who are involved in leadership with their colleagues. And so we want to favor those people who are pouring into our programs and we can pour into them and help build them up. Um, and so that's, you can notice that on what we ask. There is not a limit. Uh, we don't say, uh, we don't say you have to have been here a year or two. But when you start looking at the kinds of things that stu-, that teachers have done, uh, if you're here one or two years, there's typically, uh, the teachers who've been here longer and have done more of these things, they quickly, uh, rise to the top. Our goal, we've had up to 20 teachers at a time. Right now, just to manage the budget better, we're, uh, we run about a cohort of 10. Due to, uh, trying to even out secondary and elementary, the last cohort we did had 12 students. So we're looking at about a cohort of 10 students. And that would be, uh, starting this summer and that would go through, uh, December of '27, I think that's right. So it'd be 18 months.
So can I follow up with that?
Oh, uh, I, that was a good question. Do they sign a contract to stay for five years? Is there?
They do not. We've never made them do that. Uh, Dr. Wilson and I have talked about that and I talked to Selinda. So originally, when we started this, uh, 13 years ago, um, the school attorneys said that those, they were telling you not to do that. Uh, one of the reasons is motivational. If you have a person who, uh, is only staying because they owe the district money, then you probably don't want them in your classroom. And so that is why they, uh, they suggested people don't do that. So we never did. We, uh, I remember the conversation with Selinda 13 years ago. And I had that conversation again this week with her and it was the exact same conversation. It's really about, do you want, uh, do you want to hold them here or do you not? And we can go either way. I mean, I don't care myself. Uh, I think, uh, there are districts nearby who do that and there are districts who don't. So it's really up to the flavor of the board, uh, and what you want to do with that. We have had a, so of the 137 teachers that we have had go through the master's program in 13 years, uh, there are, uh, 81% of them are still working for us. And 8% have either moved to another district voluntarily or were involuntarily removed from the school district, because that happens. Uh, and then, uh, 11% have retired. So the majority uh, definitely stayed the five years and that's not been a problem. But there have been some that have retired within the last, uh, you know, the third, fourth, fifth year or somewhere in there.
I was just looking at the bottom of the agreement, number eight, remaining in good standing with the university and policies. It says, I may have to reimburse the district if I receive a C or lower on on a classified grade. I wonder if we could do something similar with that. I may have to reimburse the district if I voluntarily leave, you know.
Well, I'm with Selinda. If we're going to do it, and I think we create the contract, have you guys approve it and it's a legal document. It's, I don't like the may, I, you know, if we're gonna do it, we do it.
Yeah, I don't like the discretion in that.
Yeah, I agree. Which, I can work with her and bring something back to you. That would be fine by me.
I understand you're not wanting to feel like they need to be here, but I do think that they should probably sign some stipulations on the agreement. I don't, I don't know how far we want to go with it, but I think it's a good idea to at least entertain it.
Sure.
For what? Stipulations for what?
For, I don't, I don't want to have to say you may have to repay. And then what, at what point would you repay and how mu-, I mean, I think you should have some more definite defining language.
Yeah, as it relates to that provision.
Yeah.
You're not talking about a contract or a term.
I just think you need to sign an agreement. Is that, that okay? Like an agreement? Is that different?
We've been doing it 13 years. How many, how many people have gone through it?
137.
Have we had any issues with any of those people about?
Up to now, it's not been an issue. There's, we, I know we had a lady get her master's degree. Two years later, for family issues, she quit teaching. So, right, it's, it's a handful.
Concerned about that.
But I mean, if they leave, they leave.
I mean, it is, part of it is develop, I mean, investing in our staff and our teachers. And if we invest in them and educate them and make them better and they go to a different district, then I think that's okay. We've made, we've made kids better somewhere. Uh, thus far, it's not been that, I agree with you. I don't think that you can hold them hostage for a term of five years or fear of, oh, we have to pay this back because we want to leave and go somewhere else. I mean, part of what we are doing, we're educating kids, but we also need to invest in our staff and our teachers. And if we make them better people and better educated and they're doing their job better, whether it's here or somewhere else, I don't think that's a loss. I think that makes us more desirable for other people to come in because we trust our staff and we give them that free, that leeway. That's my opinion. I I would be opposed to some type of.
Sure. Well, I know for certain that, uh, as we are hiring teachers, one of the attractants to our district is the fact we offer the master's course. Uh, that is definitely something that, uh, is something that we can attract teachers with. Um, and it's something that we retain new teachers knowing that, you know, if I stay here, uh, then I can get into this program. It would def-, if it's $6,700, $6,800, you're looking at roughly $1,400 a year. So if you leave at year three, then you owe us the diff-, you know, it.
I'm not as concerned about that. I mean, I I agree with you. I I don't, I think you're doing the right thing, letting them, if they don't want to be here, we don't want them here.
Well, investing in your staff, that condition. So I mean, I I think, I think if we're gonna invest in our staff and and I don't think we should put a ton of conditions on it. I mean, it's the right thing to do. Uh, and it's, it's a great program and it's a benefit we offer. And the more we condition it and the more we put restrictions on it, the le-, we lessen the benefit. Uh, and it's, it's a great program, and it's a benefit we offer. And the more we condition it and the more we put restrictions on it, the le, we lessen the benefit. And, and I, I don't want to fix a problem that's not even happened. Um, I mean, there, there's, I understand being proactive. I understand they should have clear guidelines. They certainly should understand what we expect for them from there. But to go much beyond that, it feels like we're, we're trying to address something that hasn't happened.
When I received my master's when I was teaching, um, our school had none of these. They, they handed us a ticket the, basically the first week we were, that we started teaching there. And it, it was made clear to us before we ever started teaching that if we wanted to start taking master's courses, um, our first year teaching, that was fine. And they handed us tickets that we turned into Illinois State University for credit hours. And every teacher got it. We didn't even need to apply.
Nice.
And we kept those. We didn't have to pay the district back for it. That was one of our benefits. Um, and I know that I worked at a, a slightly larger, um, school district, but not much more. So, I kind of agree with you. Um, I don't think any of these need to be on here.
So, if somebody gets a, a C or below, we're not, I, I mean, might even have it in there because.
Well, that's, we have just said for professionalism, if, so, if a, uh, in the master's course, if you have a C, you've basically failed that course. So, I don't want to, uh, pay for a, right, that is, the reason, uh, eight is there is you are going to do what it takes to pass these courses because, uh.
I get that, but I mean, I wouldn't want to have any discretion. May.
Yeah.
As an HR person, may bother.
Yeah, so we could shall on that one. Uh, they're signing this as they turn in the application.
There might be an exception, like suppose they had a family emergency or something that caused them to not be able to.
Sure.
I mean, I, I think may ought to be there.
They don't get the credit.
To allow for exception. Reagan, what did you say?
I, I see what you're, I see what, um, okay, so go ahead and say what you said. Okay, so, so it, what Amber said was if they get a C, a blow a C, then that's basically not passing. However, that's just one, one of the courses.
One of the courses, right.
It's, it doesn't mean that they didn't pass some of the others. So, they may be taking what? Two, three classes a semester?
Two.
Two classes a semester. And so, then they failed one, but they passed the other.
Well, we have never had, we have never had anyone get a C, just so you know.
Yeah.
Uh, it, again, it's.
It's kind of, it's kind of a good, kind of a good stick then.
It's all A's and B's. Right, right.
We're, we're creating contingencies for problems that haven't happened.
It seems like this is more of a scholarship application than a, just a gift to every teacher who comes to apply. It seems like a scholarship, and scholarships usually have those kinds of requirements on them. So, maybe that's, we need to distinguish between those, what we want to do. But that doesn't affect whether we renew it with Evangel, right?
Sure, sure.
And this is a great program. I know you gave a conference last year, two years ago, and lots of schools are modeling their, uh, programs after Ozark.
Yes.
I guess here's what I would say. The issue on the table is not all the conditions to the cohort agreement or the, to this, uh, master's agreement. The issue is, who do we want? Which school do we want to work through? So, if you want to dig deeper and change this and do whatever else, I think we have a work session coming up. It sounds like we've got a full agenda now. Um, I would say that that's the issue, but otherwise it's nine, 12, and I'm sure some of the staff wants to go home and start separating.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
I'll second that.
Um, all in favor of Evangel?
Thank you. I will let them know. Uh, so I will, we'll start going through applications and we will give, uh, I will just let teachers know as we go through the application process that we're looking at this, uh, but I, this is good enough to get us started.
And it's neat that Dr. Pace is in charge. He knows Ozark too, so that's, that's great. So, of course, Dr. Patterson is in charge, won't you? So, I wonder if they talk first.
It was a hard conversation.
All right, that is the end of it. I will tell everyone. I'll get better at this. My computer died right after you be in this position. So, I was blind, blind, but I did it. So.
Nice work.
Good job.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I move, we adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
All right.
Second.
Second.
All right, let's, all in favor, let's go. All right, thanks.